Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, July first, twenty twenty-four, six P M. Now I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. Today, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following reason. Master in Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do. This is for Lawless versus Town of Free Town. And number two, Master in Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do. And this is Avila versus Town of Free Town. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, we're now in executive session. Welcome back, everybody. We are now back in open session. So I'm gonna move on to agenda item three. This is discussion of vote whether to approve the weekly warrants for fiscal year twenty-four, fifty-three, and fifty-six, and fiscal year twenty-five, one through twenty-eight. Any issues with that?
No.
That'll entertain a motion to approve weekly warrants for fiscal year twenty-four, fifty-three, and fifty-six, and fiscal year twenty-five, one to twenty-eight.
Motion made.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we have open session minutes from six seventeen twenty twenty-four. Any questions or concerns?
All look good, thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from six seventeen twenty twenty-four.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, agenda item five. Discussion of vote on the oversight of the transfer station. And this is the discussion here as to whether it's currently with the Board of Selectmen, we think, or in moving it potentially to the Board of Health.
Yeah, I think the the purpose is to have clarification, right? But the Board of Selectmen was the Board of Health, and they did oversee the transfer station. And so now that the Board of Health is a separate board completely, there's some confusion, I think, as to which board has ultimate oversight of the transfer station. You know, Vicky is the supervisor. She does the day-to-day operations. But in terms of the oversight, there's a lot we need to to look at. OSHA requirements, M S four requirements, things like that, that really need to be looked at as a whole. And so that's really what this boils down to, is clarity on who's got the oversight of the transfer station and the staff there and what's going on. I think typically it's a Board of Health issue.
Yeah. It does feel like a Board of Health situation. I'm trying to remember, like, when we talked about transfer station in the past, were we acting as the Board of Health when we when we did that? Yeah, I can't, I'd have to go back and look at the agendas, but...
Some of the things that we talked about for the transfer station were ours and whatnot. That's more of a Board of Selectmen decision, I think. Board of Health, you know, will get into more specific of the conditions. I know in prior years, prior to me being town administrator, the, it's usually the Board of Health agent that oversaw the transfer station and the staff there. And not that I'm suggesting that, but what I'm suggesting or thinking the clarification needs to be is between the Board of Health, the board itself, or the Board of Selectmen, and some clarity.
Yeah, like, and so then what are we saying there that, like, when it comes to union negotiation?
So...
Would a member of the Board of Health be leading those kind of?
So the, 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 the transfer station union comes under the highway union.
Okay, that makes sense.
So it's the, it's one of the selectmen and the highway union's representatives. And, and, and Vicky is in the union?
As well as a supervisor, right?
So she's a supervisor in the union, but she's not really a department head because she can't discipline. And that's one of the things that has come up as of late, so. There really is no oversight department, if you will. I mean, currently, I think it's the selectmen, but but I don't know, just that clarity.
So do we talk to the Board of Health? Do, have we heard anything from the Board of Health in in regards to this?
I thought Margaret was gonna come tonight. I mean, and of course Carlos, but Carlos couldn't make it. So, I mean, maybe you wanna defer to them to have a conversation and then have them report back to...
Yeah, that makes sense. I don't wanna make a unilateral decision without, you know, them being at the table and understanding, you know, exactly what this really means and kind of think it all the way through.
Yeah.
That's the other part of this, right?
I mean, there's a rush in any of this. It's not like there's something pending. It's just for clarification purposes, so certainly might wanna just ask the Board of Health to have a discussion, see what their thoughts are.
Maybe we can have, like, an official joint meeting, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's sometimes, to your point, that's better, right? When you have two boards in here just talking back and forth rather than them doing it and then come, you know, and then going back and forth, they're just sometimes just get a couple people in front of each other, make the decisions that need to be made and move on with it.
All right, that sounds good. So we'll move on from that for now. Have a joint meeting in some form and then circle back and see.
Okay.
Okay, so that brings on to agenda item six. This is discussion of vote whether to approve exclusive use of Hathaway Park for outdoor movie nights on August ninth, twenty twenty-four, September twentieth, twenty twenty-four, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, all from six thirty P M. to eleven P M. Sounds like a great idea. Any questions or concerns?
No, I'm excited about it.
Any concerns from our chiefs here?
No, I think it's an ideal spot for that type of event. The parking should be pretty reasonable. And I think people will enjoy the event.
And they're gonna have power, like, they'll have power down there to do that?
Yeah, so there's park at Hathaway Park.
Yeah. I mean, I know for the fireworks, they must do so.
Yeah, there's those, there's big poles along the, to the right of the park, if you go down that property, like, not the property line, but down there. And there's a pole that's sort of middle of the park that we're in the process of trying to determine if it has power to it, disconnecting it and moving it, because it's just smack dab in an awkward location. And then we're gonna install a new pole with some lights for our pickleball court and for use down the park. So I'm in the process of working with Eric and Chuck, the Highway Department, Tim and Carl at the Facilities Department, because we have to get the electrician out there.
Okay.
So we're just, we're not doing anything until after July fourth.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, we definitely wouldn't start construction now.
I'm not pulling out power right now, so.
Okay, great, so...
But there is enough for her to do what she needs to do.
Sounds great. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve exclusive use of Hathaway Park for outdoor movie nights on the dates and times mentioned.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so agenda item seven, this is just an acknowledgement of Jack Rue Camp for children with diabetes. We beheld at Camp Welch on July eighth, twenty twenty-four, through August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at Camp Welch. At Camp Welch, this is at Camp Welch twice, but okay. So there's no vote there, just acknowledging that there's gonna be a camp going on during those dates? Any questions or concerns?
No, nope, straightforward, good cause.
Okay, now, agenda item eight, this is discussing heating and air at the Police Department.
Yes, or lack thereof. As I have brought to the board in the past, we've had multiple issues with the heating and air conditioning system as it was designed. We have spent a considerable amount of money in repairing the system, hoping that that would fix the problem. We continue to see very large invoices on a weekly basis, like the last warrant, I think it was six thousand dollars, the warrant before it was five thousand dollars. It's consistently these big amounts of repairs. So I, I, I talked with Carl, and at some point, I just, at some point, we have to look at the system and see if we don't, you know, just rip it out and start over. And I know that sounds drastic, but that's where we're at in terms of the expense. So I did a little bit of homework and we have a consultant coming in, I believe it's July ninth. I have to look at the date. I'm on vacation, but Carl's gonna handle it. Their, their job, they will be looking at, they're gonna give us a quote, but they're gonna come in and look at the system to see if the system as designed was installed correctly in what we have, and then give us a report. So we'll be looking at that. So I just wanted to give you that update, that that's where we're at with the system in terms of...
How many years have you been here now?
Yeah, fourth, yeah, before in December, right? I mean, I don't know if you have any more to add to that in terms of the issues, or maybe T J, I know he's always, uh, working on it as well.
Honestly, I cringe every time I hear that there's a new incident to report back to Carl because he's been on top of things, as you're all aware of. And it's, it's disheartening. Obviously, a new building, we have expectations, and, but we do our best to assist these problems when we can internally. But whatever Carl and the town can do, we definitely appreciate it on our end of being in here.
Yeah.
And I think, to your point, is sometimes we need to just take a step back and let an expert come in and, you know, we've been told that this system is very advanced, like, maybe a little bit too advanced and that, maybe there's some issues with that. And so let's, let's let the expert come in and tell us what they need to tell us, good, bad, or indifferent.
Yeah. I think that it's an engineer and they're gonna tell us, at least, was it installed properly? Because maybe it wasn't, and there's a fix, and we can just fix that, and then it will work. Or, yep, and I will tell you that our O P Ms on the fire station has worked with similar design systems, and he said basically it's the same in all of these systems. They just struggle.
Was this like a cheaper option?
I don't know, because I wasn't involved in that process, but I doubt it. I think it's pretty advanced. I think there's fifty-two units, fifty-two, like, mini splits that all supposed to talk to each other, and they don't always talk to each other. And I don't know. First, we thought it was the maintenance and not keeping the filtration system up, but we took care of that last year, which was quite expensive. I mean, the maintenance agreement alone is fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars just to maintain the system yearly. The boiler has failed already. When we got that under warranty, which Carl did a lot of work on that, the, they're not, they're not making that boiler anymore because they had so many trouble, so much trouble with it. And they would give us the money for the boiler, but not to replumb the whole entire system because now it has to be, the pipes have to come in differently. So I think we were able to get a contractor to fix it for now, but we know it's on borrowed time. So there's a lot going on with it. That's why I said, finally, I, I just, me and Carl, we just said, like, we need to not just keep throwing good money after bad. If, if it's never gonna be able to be fixed, we need to take a different approach. So I'm not, I don't have answers. I'm just telling you at this point, I gotta hire a consultant to come in and look at the system to see if it's been installed properly and get recommendations from them.
So my question is, is if this system is really that bad, do we hire? First of all, how much is the consultant? Do we know?
I don't know yet. He's coming to give me a quote.
So, and then I wonder if we can find if it's at all possible to go back. And sometimes it's not even worth it for the amount of money you're gonna get out of it, but to go back after the company to try and get our money for this consultant, right? You know, whatever the name of the system is that's in here, do we go after them? Now we're having to pay a consultant, or it's probably not worth it based on attorneys and everything.
And it's probably out of warranty, that they probably had a one-year warranty and everything. Unless, like, you know, if I had a mini split that failed, I might be able to get the manufacturer of the mini split to replace the mini split. But this is more of a, I think, a mechanical, and I don't know if Sadman Ashley can talk more to that, but...
Most of the problems seem to be focused on that unit, on the very tip-top of the station that brings in the air from the outside. It's been a lot of ongoing issues with the high and low pressure for the condenser unit. Some days we notice that it starts getting a little humid here in the building. I go on, I log on to the system, and I can see that there's, they're in alarm. We forward it to Carl. Carl has advanced air, which I believe has a contract, come out and take care of it. They have been sending out the same guy every time, who seems to be, is really fine-tuning his knowledge of our, our system and how it's set up. And it seems like he's, he's one step closer to finishing or fixing the issue. But yes, it's been a nightmare. We're not seeing the problems that we had when we first moved in, like, our first summer, our second summer, where we had tiles dropping because they were soaking wet because the system couldn't keep up with the humidity. It's a lot better now, but there are definitely fires that you're seeing on warrants in the form of catch, so.
Yeah. Well, we'll see. Maybe he'll say it's good and we just need to tweak it. I don't know. We'll see. But I just wanna, I wanted you to be aware of that because if it's gonna require a new system, we'll be looking for substantial money to do so.
Understood.
That'd be a fun conversation.
All right, so I think we're good with that. We'll move on to agenda item nine. So this is discussion of vote whether to declare the items listed in attachment A a surplus and what to do with each item. And we have the list here and the recommendations, which you probably can't see. Nothing here seems to be of substantial value.
No. So it's definitely like some old technology-type stuff, sync, and, yeah.
I need to do this in my house.
It's just not, yeah, there's nothing really.
Everything's surplus. Yeah, I have no issues with this or the recommendation.
Yeah, nope. Especially where a bunch of the stuff's at, at the C O A, you know, and then with the exception of one item coming from the police station, you know, they, they're always crunch for space. So we can get the stuff out of their way and free up a little bit of space.
You only like the bingo machine, like, I'm sure someone, you know, you could probably put that on uni bid, right? Someone might like that bingo machine. I hate to throw it away.
Yeah, it says in the thing that the balls get stuck. So I don't know. Someone might want it and try to tinker with it. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the value might be overstated.
Yeah.
I think so. The balls get stuck.
Someone fix the machine, the weighted balls or something.
Beautiful bingo machine. Okay, but I have no issues with the...
Yeah, me either. All makes sense to me.
All right.
We'll need to know where you want them to go. Like, do you want us to send it to the transfer station?
So, yeah, I guess anything that's, the recommendation is dispose of, obviously send it to the transfer station. So that's just the grills, really?
I, I mean, a bunch of that stuff is still gonna have to go to the transfer station to go, really, because it's, it's trash, right? So, um...
Okay, how about this? Anything with a zero dollar estimated value goes to the transfer station, hundred percent? Just put that off, right off the bat?
I think that air conditioners, maybe we can have Tim see if they work, and if they do, maybe there's a senior that might need an air conditioner that they, that we could...
Don't need them to. That's a good idea.
You know, take them, because sometimes they don't have them.
But then even, like, all right, I'm looking, the filing cabinet, they say there's a value of fifty dollars, but it's saying the drawers get stuck and whatever, it doesn't, still works with lock.
I mean...
Does it make sense to try and do anything with it for such a short value?
Waste of time. Should we just, I think everything is transferred station? Yeah.
Scrap it?
I think so.
Scrap it.
All right, I think that's what we're doing here. You cool with that?
I am.
I do like the idea of doing that with the air conditioner as well.
All right.
Be the only caveat to it all.
Yeah. So we're saying everything is the transfer station except for the air conditioners?
Yes.
All right, so all it's in a motion that we declare all the items on attachment A a surplus and send everything to the transfer station excluding the air conditioners, which we'll have maintenance try to fix?
Well, yeah.
Just see if they work.
See if they work. If they don't work, send those to the transfer station as well.
Yes.
Works for me. Motion made.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we have discussion of vote whether to approve the police chief's request to declare Cruiser five-five-seven a two thousand eighteen Dodge Charger as surplus and use this trade-in when purchasing the new vehicle. And Chief, I saw your report here that car's got some issues. It smells like gas when you drive it. It doesn't, it doesn't sound very good.
Life, and, yeah, it's limping along. We definitely have to do something with it. So as you know, this car being six years old and the amount of abuse that we put it through, the patrol function, we're at a point where we can't even fix the problems with it now without being more of an, of an expense. So my recommendation is the company is willing to give us credit towards the next purchase with the car, if the board's willing to do that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, reliability is everything for both you gentlemen, right? So, kind of goes without saying.
So you go with that?
Yeah.
Any questions or concerns, anybody? All right, thanks, Chief. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the police chief's request to declare Cruiser five-five-seven two thousand eighteen Dodge Charger a surplus and use it as a trade when purchasing a new vehicle.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to agenda item eleven. So this is discussion of vote on awarding the R F P for Police Station Number Three Construction Project. And it looks like, so we have a bid that's recommended by both the Stark Architects as well as A C G. Actually came in below, you know, our budget here, which is great.
Recommended by the subcommittee as well.
Perfect.
That we met last week.
Yep, awesome.
And both companies have worked with Stark and, well...
A C G or A C G.
Thank you. I don't know why I just drew a blank. Both have worked with this company and both had nothing but good things to say.
Perfect. And, and we got, what, seven bids in, right? And they're all within a reasonable kind of, it's not like this one's extremely low, that would cause me concern that, like, well, they're missing something. You know what I mean? They're all in the same ballpark, so I think that just gives me a little more comfort.
Yeah, they were all vetted to their, their, their references.
Yep. All right, awesome. So, um... So with that, I'll entertain a motion to award the R F P for Fire Station Number Three to Verica. Am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Verica Construction, Inc.?
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, this is related, twelve is related to eleven, so this is a chain of motion to approve the town administrator to approve and execute the contract for Fire Station Number Three Construction Project.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item thirteen. This is a transfer request, so, and I don't have to, this is not a vote here, it's just, it's just acknowledgement. So I'm acknowledging reserve fund transfer request for fire chief for thirty thousand dollars for fire repairs and maintenance. We all acknowledge that? If you want to add to it?
We spent over thirty thousand dollars to repair one fire engine, and my whole budget was fifteen.
There you go. That seems to be a problem.
It's, like, you know, a truck is five or six hundred thousand dollars, and everything is astronomical, and you just can't. You can't take it to the, the farmer next door and put it in his barn and fix it anymore. It's all computerized, and it's just very costly, and it was unfortunate, but it's one of those unforeseen things, so.
Understood. Okay, well, thank you.
When's our new one coming?
Twenty twenty-seven?
Last year. Last year, September.
Wow, that's exciting.
That's...
I'm hopeful, not optimistic, but I'm hopeful.
Crazy.
All right, thank you. So agenda item fourteen, discussion of vote whether to approve the transfer request from Council on Aging Director for four hundred seventy-five dollars and forty cents for, from C O A vehicular supplies, tires and tubes to C O A drivers' P P T salary and wages. Just moving some money around there?
Yep.
All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve that transfer request.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item fifteen, discussion of vote on using federal ARPA money in the sum of fifty-five thousand dollars for the engineering costs to determine the property lines of the four corners intersection. This should be interesting.
Yeah, so this is, it's actually fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, and it's, it's, it's for the the engineers cannot determine where the property lines are in the four-way intersection. So obviously, we're working on trying to do some improvements there, but we can't tell what the impacts are because we don't know where the property lines are. And we've already spent a substantial amount of money trying to go back and look at the titles and whatnot, so part of this is for that engineering. But I, I probably should have added, this is also, part of this is for some additional engineering for the sewer line that came up throughout the project, where we had to do some surveying of the land for the pump station portion of the sewer line. And it wasn't included in the original quote because I wasn't sure where, where we were going with that, whether we were gonna go with pump stations or, or gravity-fed system, so. So that's, and it's just not just for the four corners engineering piece, but it's to determine, and I, and I, we've done half the work, and I just think we need to finish it so that, once and for all, we know where the property lines are for the whole four-way intersection. They're just not there. You know, I think it was an old cart path that got made into a roadway at one point, and...
Is this like the, what is now the Vet, like that?
The Vet, the, um, all four, like, you know, we're assuming that the roadway is sort of the property line, but there is no real documents. I, and I do have a report. I do have a report of what they actually found. I think they found one point out of those four, those four lots of where they can tie in one corner. The rest, they can't. So at this point, the engineers even said, look, we're pretty much have done as much of the work as we can do, and now it's legal to see what legal can do. So it's, yeah, nothing goes that smooth. Very time-consuming, and that's why you haven't seen...
What's the timeline gonna look like?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't even know what they need to do at this point, but that's why you haven't seen more come through about the four corners intersection and what, what, because our next step was to get definitive impacts so that we could, you know, show that to the abutters and make a decision based on the impacts to the abutters. But we could never come up with a definitive line to do that. So how do we move forward if we can't tell in a butter what or, or the, the town or you can't assess what the impact is to make a decision how we move forward? So we're sort of stuck, but I think it needs to be resolved.
Yeah.
And it's, it's ARPA money that...
ARPA money, and so it is tied with the sewer line as well, I...
I think it's just good for us in general to have that knowledge, regardless, right, of where property lines and for that region, because...
I think, like I said, we're kind of stuck without it. We can't move forward with any improvements in the four corners. And this might come up again when we work on the bridge, right, which is in the, in the process where we don't, we might, as you come off the bridge, there is a question of maybe where the property lines are as well.
I remember that discussion as well.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward to me.
So can you just amend it to five, fifty-five thousand, six forty?
Fifty-five thousand, yep, got it. Okay. So with that, I want to entertain a motion on using, um, to use federal ARPA money in the sum of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for engineering costs to determine the property lines for the four-corner intersection.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then, agenda item sixteen, discussion of vote whether to sign the letter of support for House Rule Number three-nine-three-one and Act authorizing the appointment of retired police officers as special police officers in the town of Free Town. And I read that today. That's, I think that all, makes a lot of sense to me. And so question for you, Chief, I was thinking about this, like, so that there's no, like, direct kind of contradiction with the, the new reform, like, the Police Reform Act or the, with this, I mean...
I don't, I don't believe so. As a matter of fact, I, I believe we've been waiting for this legislation to pass so we can update our, you know, our policies, procedures, our job description, the whole nine yards. So this only puts us in a better position.
Yeah. That makes sense. And like, accreditation, no, no impact there for anything?
I mean, I've been waiting for this so I can change everything over on my end.
Perfect.
So I'm done waiting for it.
All right, that makes a lot of sense, because I think that, yeah. I mean, I mean, obviously, it's tough to find new people, and I think that when we have situations like the Fourth of July or things of that nature, and, you know, events, I think it makes a lot of sense to be able to call on, you know, those who've already worked here.
So specifically, this item reflects the officers that work in a full-time capacity here, full-time position, and then they retire.
Yep.
And they wish to stay on. They can be appointed as a special police officer until they max out at the age of... Until they uh, max out at the age of seventy.
Yep.
And um, then they have to uh, change their status at that point, but. Um, obviously, a regular full-time officer can remain full-time uh, up to the age of sixty-five and then this option comes into play. And um, they can stay on for that additional five years. And um, like I said, everything's in line with the legislation and our our paperwork. I just have to adjust things on my end.
Perfect. And and do we think that this will pass? Like has has have we seen this kind of legislation pass for other towns?
Other towns have had it passed. Um, I think initially when it went to legis- there was some recommendations for changes. And I think that's what's been the holdup, so we didn't make those follow-ups and it went back for review. It was so close.
Yeah, I think right now it's in the house, waiting for approval.
Yes, I recently spoke to one of the state reps about it to say that it's could be any time.
So it's in the house and it has to be voted on by July thirty-first? So I think what they want is for. Another push from us saying, hey, we really need this. Can we get it done in this session? Otherwise, it's gonna get pushed off to another session, I think. So that's what this is really about, cause we've been trying to do this for about a year now.
Uh, well over a year.
Yeah. So it's it's the last sort of like uh, ditch effort to try to get the house to. Approve, it's up there. Um, Carol Fiola had written a letter of recommendation for it. They're aware of it, but now we just gotta say, hey, make sure you get this done while you're in session.
Makes sense.
I'll probably call the senator as well and say, hey, can you make sure you get this one done?
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Alright, so without entertain a motion to um, for us to sign the letter of support for House rule. Number three nine uh, three nine three one and act authorizing the appointment of retired police officers as special police officers in the town of Free Town.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Margaret, welcome. So did you come today to speak about the uh, transfer station oversight?
I'm not actually speaking about it, I'm here to listen.
Okay, yeah, so just to kind of fill you in, so we kind of, we talked about it a little bit. We think it makes sense to maybe have a joint meeting with the Board of Health. And the Board of Selectmen, um, just to kind of flush out the idea and make sure that we're on the same page and kind of think it through a little more detail. Your opinion, are you are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Um, we do have a meeting on the ninth, I think it is. I don't know if you guys are available then, we could put you on the agenda.
Of this, nah, I won't be, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, then.
July ninth?
Yeah, yeah. We'll we'll discuss it ourselves at at our meeting and then we can come up with.
That makes sense.
A date for a joint meeting.
Okay.
We just, you know, the Trevor's point was who would we be to make a decision? Without you involved, so we wanted to all kind of meet together and figure it out and weigh out the pros and cons and.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, great.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Okay, so now um, personnel.
You want me to deal with it?
Yeah, if you want.
Deal with it.
And that's a. Yeah, I think I think there's a great opportunity. For me to rest my voice a little bit, so go for it.
Alright, so um. Rest uh, agenda item seventeen, acknowledge the resignation of Alicia Travers as full-time signal operator. Effective six-three twenty-four and Katrina Disroja, Disroche. As part-time signal operator effective six-five twenty-four. So, thank you both, we appreciate your time. Agenda number eighteen, rescind the reappointment, vote done in error on six seventeen twenty-four for Kimberly Fails.
So he missed one, is that what happened?
Well, she's uh, contract now, right Debbie? So she doesn't need to be appointed.
Well, we only have one of these so far. We have like a thousand appointments that day, so.
Need to vote for that?
Yeah.
For the re-recision.
Yeah, I wanna just, I think we're gonna bring a vote on that, so I just.
Yeah.
entertain a motion.
Yeah, so with that, I will entertain a motion to rescind the reappointment of the vote done in error on six seventeen twenty-four for Kimberly Fails.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number nineteen, discussion and vote on whether to approve the following appointments, James Bo- Boyven, I'm sorry. Hacking the name, as planning board associate member effective seven-one twenty-four through six-thirty twenty-five. Mark Joes as harbor master uh, slash self-shelf fish warden effective seven-one twenty-four through six-thirty twenty-five. And then uh, agenda, I mean, item number C, uh, Chief Scott Rose as lockup as attendant keeper and lock of. Keeper of the lock. Lockup effective seven-one twenty-four through six-thirty twenty-five. So, I apparently can't talk today, so um, yeah, I mean, those are all pretty straightforward, Chief. I hopefully you can.
Handle that one.
Keeper of the lock. Sounds cool.
Yeah, we're gonna hang up a nice little certificate for you on that one, huh? So uh, any questions or concerns now?
No.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the uh, following appointments as just read.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so uh, twenty twenty-one to be passed, uh, cause Selectman Lopes is not here.
Okay, yep, no, good point. Uh, we have only two of us here and it's. Alright, agenda item twenty-two, uh, discussion and vote on uh, recognition of full-time continuous employment request for Kobe J. Embert. So, I believe um, we have some of the police officers here.
Yeah, so and I looked like this is, there's a long history of us kind of doing this, right? Um. Seems like the fair thing to do, in my opinion.
I guess, Chief, you.
Sure, um, yeah, as you just mentioned, this is just another um, way of recognizing the continuous employment of uh, employees. That have transitioned from, you know, obviously dispatch to a a police officer. Um, Kobe started in in July of uh, twenty nineteen, but didn't become full-time until May of twenty twenty. And uh, he's been uh, with us uh, an asset. Um, and we're seeing him now in the role of a police officer and his skills as a dispatcher is. Nothing but enhanced him as a police officer. And I'm excited to say that uh, he's. Shown interest in staying on when we have uh, dispatchers that uh, need to be filled in for whatever reason, he's willing to pitch in. And uh, you know, take some of those assignments going forward, cause he has all the credentials to be a dispatcher when needed. We rely on these people, whether it's a an officer or a firefighter. Um, we are sure on dispatchers. I think everybody's been seeing the advertisement that we've got going on. And um, but we need those roles filled to uh, maintain the safety here in the community, so. But um, yeah, Kobe's been um, an asset. I can't say much more than that and. Recognizing hang in this continuous uh, service is just a credit to him and.
Uh, we, ob- obviously, I think it's been very long track record of me saying I'm very pro employee, right? Like I wanna do what I can to retain the good ones. Um, my only question is, are we gonna have any kickback of other employees? If he's based on his time given more money than people who, you know, officers who have been on longer, right? We've been out in the field longer, you know, do we foresee that being an issue?
So, uh, I mean, we're seeing it right now with this role going from dispatcher to uh, you know. Police off, full-time police officer. And traditionally, it has been a stepping stone. Where um, people get introduced to our internal community here in law enforcement and communications. And uh, they see their role um, to go forward in the law enforcement and annual, or even firefighter. So, um, I can't project that. We've we've, just seems like it's. You know, it does appear every now and then, but uh, people are looking for their opportunities um, to become a police officer. Back in the day, it was more uh, difficult to become a police officer, it was more competitive. Um, nowadays. I don't think we see those problems. We can't find enough good candidates to become a police officer. So using uh, communications is not as much of a need to be a stepping stone.
I think it just shows that like, when someone starts the gra- like, you know, starts dispatcher and they do make those extra steps, like. Like, we're meeting them halfway there and and I think, you know, we'll do our part, you know, they stick with the towel, right? So I think that just shows good will.
I, oh yeah, it's that, I mean, I don't don't take anything I just said as being wrong or negative because I'm very pro employee and wanting to do what we can to keep the good. So um, I'm I'm fine with it. I mean, I don't see any, Debbie, you don't have, do you have anything to add to it or any issues? I'm not trying to throw you under the wall here, but I don't know.
I mean, I think my concern is the the employees that we hired last year that are on, that'll be um. Lower step than a brand-new officer and I'm concerned about what that will have for morale, but that's my only concern.
Um, and you know, speaking with the officers, it's not really an issue, doesn't affect seniority, he'll stay at the bottom uh, level. It's just recognizing his years of service that'll affect, you know, his salary, it'll also um, affect his um. Uh, vacation time as well. Um, but I I, you know, I don't, you know, I don't see it. I think it's just working, it it'll work out well. And um, I don't see it, any other employees being affected right now. Um, so.
And I guess to to her point, that's exactly what I was talking about, right? So, but I mean. We we hired from, you know, other places and we brought them in and we gave them, to Trevor's point, we've done this in the past, right? So we hired from outside and we brought them in and we kind of used that. Um, time, but it was a little bit different in the fact that they were full-time police officers and.
But we've even done this for like dispatchers, I think, too, as well in the past, right?
Correct, Sergeant Ashley is here today. He was also one, uh, started off as a as a dispatcher, uh, had at least. Two to three years of service before he had the opportunity to go to the academy. And um, we've seen his performance.
Exactly.
Yep.
Just tremendous that those skills from dispatch flow into, you know, the the law enforcement field.
Makes a lot of sense.
Different way of looking at things, right? From doing that to being out active in the field might give you a different perspective as to when you're. Going through a call and whatever, right? So I see him shaking his head over there, so yeah, so you know, I mean, listen, I'm.
And hopefully, I'm not making any big heads back there.
I'm pretty sure he'll stay humble. So, um, yeah, so, so you're okay with that, Trevor?
Go with me, yep.
Okay, alright, so um, with that, um. I will entertain a motion to um, approve the recognition of full-time continuous employment request for Kobe J. Embert.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, number twenty-three, discussion and vote uh, whether to carry over up to twenty vacation hours for Carl Bizarro. From fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five.
So it's like two and a half or three days?
Yeah.
He just wasn't able to use his vacation and then the month of June, one of the issues we have, ongoing issues we have at the town hall is. Every, you know, a lot of the employees wait and then they take all their vacation in time in the month of June. And he wasn't able to take vacation time or I would have had to close that office. So I told him that I would, you know, ask you to carry over. I, he did, he was gonna give me the, he came back today. I'm not sure how many hours. It might be only thirteen hours or so, um, but I, he did, you know, he's a bylaw employee. I believe he gets ten days, he's he gets only ten days of vacation, so I'd hate for him to get back two days.
As well as he's dealing with the project that's going on, right? He has a lot going on on his plate, so yeah, I know, he's been a huge asset to the town, so.
Okay, cool, man.
Alright, so uh, with that, entertain a motion to uh, carry over up to twenty vacation hours for Carl Bizarro for. From fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five.
Alright, make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A discussion and vote on whether to carry over up to sixteen vacation hours for Matthew Parent from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five.
Same.
Similar situation, um, uh, he was trying to take time off, I needed to call him back in. I needed him to process payments, um, June thirtieth is the end of the fiscal year, but it's also. The end of some of our grants and things had to be processed and paid and I needed him to come and do it, so he 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 was doing me a favor by coming in. Or the town a favor, so we wouldn't lose the grant monies. Um, and so I don't know what he has left for hours, it might only be eight hours, but. Um, I told him I would put this on because he was coming in at my request to do to some near-end stuff.
That's a no-brainer. Alright, so with that, entertain a motion to carry over um, up to sixteen vacation hours for Matthew Parent from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, number twenty-five, discussion and vote whether to post for a part-time human resources director. Um, so this has been funded, it's something that we've talked about heavily in the past. As well as the burden that it creates for you, Debbie, um, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's roughly eighty employees, um, and with eighty employees, there's multiple different. Things coming across my desk, uh, good, bad and indifferent. It it just takes a lot of time. Um, and with the grant opportunities and the projects that we're in the middle of. The tower project, the fire station project, the bathroom project, there's a lot going on and the HR stuff just slows me down incredibly. Um, and also, I've said this in the past, it's hard for me to ask a department head to work with me and and, you know. Jump in the trenches and help me out and work with me and then I have to be the one that has to recommend them if there's something. And not that we have a lot of that, but every once in a while and it just, it breaks the trust, right? Uh, here I am saying, please, come on, I need your help, do this with me and then two weeks later, I'm like, you know, you did this and and I had. It just, it does, it doesn't work well for um, for the relationships at town hall and getting work done when you're asking people to. Jump in and really give it their all. So um, also, I think they feel like they don't have a place to go if they have an issue, right? Um, they don't wanna complain about me, to me.
I was just about to say that, that's part of it, right? Is they, human resources can also be an avenue for them to talk to people and, you know. They're not therapists, but they're, you know, they can go in and talk to them about, you know, other employee issues and they, you know, usually if someone hired, they've. Dealt with this in the past and they understand how to deal with it rather than.
And I just think it's good if we can get somebody a little independent, that's not, you know, in the in the trenches every day. Um, and just help with the workload. The problem, obviously, which maybe we'll discuss at the next meeting, is physically where I put this person, right? We have no space whatsoever, so.
If they're willing to work from home, majority, I think that might, you know, just coming from meetings and they can use your, you know, you're you're like the office.
Yeah. So that's a detail that I'm, I'll struggle to work out.
Yeah. I just think too, like, even like, like, there's the, like, the issues you run into with having employees, obviously, like the HR stuff, but there's also like a lot of other, like. Just like benefits and how those work and.
Yeah, there's, there's just.
Crafting up proceed- new new policies, procedures as things change and we need to adapt to different kind of realities, like.
Questions on union contracts, quote FMLA requests, um, what do I do? I have this issue, how do I handle it? There's just a lot of questions employees have. And right now, I I I handle some of them. Lann handles some of them, Patty handles some of it, Dina handles some of it. And it, I don't know that it's consistent, I don't know that it's the best. So, um, this was the part-time position, it's not a full-time position and I don't think we need full-time.
So just now we have the chiefs in here, would that, would this HR person also extend out to the to the police and fire?
Well, they're all employees of the town, so yes, I mean, you know, Harry's a little bit different, Chief. Chief Ashley in that he is the strong chief and has a little more um, control over his staff, but in terms of. Questions of benefits and all of that, sure, they they would definitely um. Be that, I mean, I have questions about the benefits, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't, I don't have all the answers and I, I think. We need someone to develop the answers, so sometimes the answers are, well, it depends on the town, like. You know, what they allow. Well, we have no written policies, right? This is one, been one of my things since I've been here, there's not a lot of written policies. So, I I don't know, I don't know what they've done in the past and sometimes the things just have to come in front of the selectmen and say, okay, what do you wanna do for the employees? And I think those are the things that I need HR to start vetting and getting together, so that we at least know what we have, what the employees. Have and you can always change it, but at least have a baseline, somewhere to start. And a lot of it has to do with retirement, right? When you retire, do do they get this? Do they, can their spouses get added on health insurance after they retire? I don't know.
And I think also like, you know, we live in a very litigious society now and everyone's getting sued all the time, like I think this. Will protect the town too from poten- some potential lawsuits if we, you know, make sure we go through all the process procedures when there is an issue and we have to let someone go or something of that nature. You know, um, cause as we've seen recently.
I think there's just a whole document system too that we're looking to implement right now. I think the police have that, they have a more of a document system that we don't have at the town hall, but. You know, um, again, Lann is collecting documents in our office, Patty's collecting documents in her office. Lann is collecting documents in our office, Patty's collecting documents in her office. We don't really have a centrally located document system. I, it's it's outdated, right? It's outdated. It needs to be updated. We need to be streamlined. We need to have everything where it needs to be. The employees need to be able to get into their own files to see their own stuff or whatever, um so I think there's a lot that can work that can be beneficial to the town, for the employees' uh benefit, as well as I just think I can get much more work done as well.
Yeah.
And be more productive if I'm I'm not sidetracked, cause HR issues pop up not when they're planned. You're in the middle of something and you have to drop.
To your, to your day, to your point, it's not something that comes up and you deal with it in five minutes. Sometimes it is, but not many times either, so.
They're sensitive issues.
Yeah, and and it's part-time, so it's, you know, there's no um design to make benefit issues and things like that where.
Yeah, we're just looking to put the job out and see what we can get for responses and again, I think at the next meeting when we start talking about our space situation at the town hall, that'll come up too is where will we put this person and and um how we make that work.
Yep.
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean.
Recurring issue.
Yeah, exactly.
Where?
Something we might have heard before, time or two. So, um any other questions, Trevor?
No.
Alright, so um with that, I will entertain a motion uh to post a part-time human resources director.
I'll make that mo-
For a human resources director.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh agenda item number twenty-six, discussion and vote whether to approve the parking control officer one job description with a pay rate of nineteen dollars an hour.
Do you know the background on this one?
I don't.
So, we have, uh we, you know, we have someone who's in a managerial kind of position now for this. But but um to cover from that person is out, we're gonna have a you know, somebody else who's acting as the as the supervisor, is that the right word I should be using?
Uh it's kind of too full. She's gonna be, basically, I guess, promoted to the parking control one.
Yeah.
You know, to give, she's been here, this is her third summer, so she'll get an extra dollar an hour for that. And then when the seasonal manager is unavailable, she'll step up into that role. And get an additional amount for that.
So, yeah, so it, and now we'll have coverage all the time, cause obviously, it's like, it's it's a tricky situation because you wanna, you wanna have a supervisor there at least on call for the weekends all the time, but it's the summer. People go on vacations, like, you know, so I think this helps making this other position. I think this solves a lot of our issues there. So I think it makes sense to me.
As long as there's some sort of agreement between the two, to make sure that we have continuous coverage. Because then we don't have two people that, you know, we're paying someone more money and then they're both off. So the fourth of July, they both say, hey, we don't wanna work and then we're stuck with paying someone else more money or or giving this person a position and we still can't cover it. So, um that's probably something we would um we would have to discuss with with who have we decide to put in that position, right? So, but do you, I mean, beyond that, I don't see anything. Okay, cool. Alright, so um with that, I will attain a motion to approve the parking control officer one job description with a pay rate of nineteen dollars an hour.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twenty-seven, discussion and vote whether to increase a parking control officer one pay rate to twenty-one dollars an hour when covering for seasonal beach and boat ramp managers absence, so.
There we go.
Kind of the same thing.
Yeah, they're related, yep.
Yeah, so, um alright, so with that, I will entertain a motion um to approve the increased parking control officer one pay rate to twenty-one dollars an hour when covering the seasonal beach and boat ramp managers absence.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so then it's um Board of Parks and Commission, which all is all up to me, so. Agenda item number twenty-eight, discussion and vote on whether to add additional signs regarding no pets at ball fields. So, this came up when when a meeting when you weren't present and um one of my issues was, you know, Carl, Carlos obviously being very heavy into the the fields and everything was saying that there's a burden of people coming in, not controlling their pets, going to the bathroom and then there's really no signage in place that.
Is that K R R, you're talking specifically or all?
All, all of them. Um, so my issue was, is it basically said that there was, you know, I believe it was that there was no pets allowed. And I didn't want to go after the good person who shows up. You you show up with your dog and you're walking your dog and you're a responsible pet owner and you clean up after them. Um, I, so I worried about that, but here's what I'm gonna say is, since then, you know, we talked about it. I haven't heard a single complaint. And normally, if I talk about something or we talk about something in a meeting and people have an issue with it, we hear about it, right? So I, I mean, have you guys heard anything in the office? No.
No, is there signs that say no dogs currently?
I think there are, but I don't, I didn't go to every field to chat.
There's s- signs that say no dogs allowed. And I think Carlos' position was, he wanted to say no pets, because you can bring a service dog.
Yeah.
I think that might be what was going on. Um but.
I think there was, wasn't there a discussion that they wanted the mass general law on it and stuff like that on the signs? So I wasn't sure what the signs were actually going to say.
On the signs.
Is there like enforceable penalties if somebody
Doesn't pick up.
Doesn't pick up their dog.
Maybe if mass general law does says that, I don't know.
It was like.
Never be approved, but.
But we haven't got any complaints. I, I, we, we're getting complaints about the geese on the beach. That's what we're getting complaints about right now.
Good luck with doing anything about that.
There's a mean swan out there.
So I guess, you know, my point was is.
Meat swans are mean.
I just didn't wanna hurt the resident that does the right thing, right? And make them show, because the person who shows up and is doing the right thing is gonna be the one who's gonna turn away. The one who doesn't care is still not gonna care and they're gonna do what they want, so. Um, so I, so I, listen, I, that was kind of my my gripe and now I'm like, well, you know what? No complaints means something, so I I'm okay with it. You have any issues, Trevor?
No.
No, okay. Alright, so um with that, I will attain a motion to approve uh adding additional signs regarding no pets at ball fields.
Make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That help us with what they say or?
I think just no pets is like, I I understand what, I understand what Carlos is saying there, right? Um, cause then if, you know, if it's not a pet, if it's a service dog. Like, part of me thinks like, now we we already voted on this, but it's like, really, if someone's showing up and watching their kid play with their leash dog, I don't see a problem with that. Right? It's like the, but.
And and based on what the conversation was, we had that night, was it was more about people bringing their dogs out onto the field and allowing them to go to the bathroom. And you know, the, not for nothing, these guys are all volunteers. They're out there, they're working on these fields and then, you know, then they're bringing the kids out there and that stuff, so it's I don't blame, I mean, you know, so.
Yeah, I think the sign is helpful.
Sliding into poop is what he said.
Yeah, yeah, I consider having some like bad memories of me as a kid playing K R R potentially running to the same problem.
Alright, that's all I have.
Alright.
Yeah, I'll quickly update you on the projects. Um, the bathrooms are under construction. The sheet rock was installed today, so we've had a frame, a rough plumbing and electrical insulation and now sheet rock. So they're moving right along. I, they're on schedule. I don't foresee any issues. That was part of one of the grants that needed to get taken care of uh Friday. The um fire station, as you know, we're we're approving the the contract, so I don't expect any holdups on that. I've gotta get, I've gotta vet the contract and then send it over to the contractor to be signed. But that's moving right along. The COA pod, I signed the order for that. Um, I think today or Friday, I can't remember. I finally signed it. The the site work issue is still an issue and I am trying to get the engineers to come together and sort it, sort it out in terms of the site work that needs to be done before the pod comes. I'm sure I'll get it done, but it's been a lot of back and forth just because of the elevation and the grades and the we haven't been able to get the information to tell us how much how much space they need under the pod. Uh one said the I-beam's eighteen inches, but the plan says the I-beam's twelve inches. So we're just trying to make sure that we dig down the right, the right elevation and the concern is we're digging down up against a building. We're gonna undermine the frost wall to the foundation. So I'm, I met with um a company that does pilings, that can just drive a piling in without digging up against the building. A cow brought them.
Pearson's pilings, by any chance?
I don't know, Goliath, maybe? So that that was pretty interesting, so he's working on getting a price. So I'm trying to wrap, uh once this can get done, we can move right along. So that's where the COA pods are. Uh the pickleball court, the basketball court was dug up. The concrete was poured last week because it had to be done for the grant that Lann was able to get. Uh that has been done and that was paid as well and that grant was closed out. The court will need to be painted and finished up. My only concern is, I'm not sure that, um I think Chuck might fence it off, because if people walk on it, he's not gonna be able to paint it. So, for the fourth of July, so um that's the only concern with that. But the concrete's set and ready to 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 roll on that project. Uh the tower project, I believe I've heard that the equipment is here somewhere.
Fingers crossed, I mean, should be pretty soon.
The equipment is here and they're staging it as they need to before they install it. So we're hoping the end of July sometime, we should be able to go up and live with that tower project. Um, some of the other stuff, I'm, you know, we're still working on the municipal fiber, I'm working on the bridge. We're trying to get into a portal for the bridge grant. The water mapping grant, we're moving forward on that. It's just now, a lot of things are just waiting for me to do procurement, which is my bottleneck. Um, working on the three projects for the school that were funded at the special town meeting. I am, because they will be paid for by the town of Free Town, they have to be procured by the town of Free Town. So I'm working on the procurement and Lann's actually doing quite a bit of that for me right now, so I can get it off the the, my desk hopefully tomorrow before I go on vacation. So those three things will be ready to roll in the month of August, because they need to be done before the end of the year. Other than that, I think that's where our projects are. Everything else is in fairly good shape for us.
I'm glad you didn't use the term that's it at the end of it, cause I thought you were going to and I was gonna give you a hard time.
I don't know, any questions on any other projects or anything?
No.
Any public input? Nope. Alright, I think we'll sign and then close.
Might make poky soul.
Poky soul?
Yeah, poky bowl, poky soul, you might make it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Up here. That's the hardest part about doing personnel, Jared, is say, pronouncing everyone's names. It's really is tough.
Yeah, and and I get nervous that I'm, I don't want to mean disrespect anyone, right?
Not too bad.
No.
Okay, so now that we have everything signed, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.